Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order for Thursday, October 2nd. Low call, please. Chairman Post? Here, Commissioner Tugel.
Here.
Commissioner Carlson?
Here.
Commissioner Holly?
Here.
Commissioner Deanna?
Here.
Commissioner Silver?
Present.
Commissioner Weber?
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve the October 2nd agenda?
Mr. Chairman, may I propose that I'm having the feeling that a lot of people are here for cell towers, and I'm not sure they are going to be interested in long work sessions on housing and signs. So I would propose that we have number eight on the agenda be cell towers, number nine work session, and number 10 housing.
Support?
Support.
All in favor of the agenda as modified?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved then. And then, may I have a motion for approval of the September 4th minutes as printed?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, approved. This is the opportunity for, the first opportunity for public comment. If you were here for a, to make public comments that are not part of the other issues, such as the signs or cell towers, you may approach and speak before the Planning Commission at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time, the public comments, and move to the public hearing. So it's about one minute after seven. We're opening the public hearing to consider an amendment to the Ferrisburg zoning ordinance, adding section 3.190 G temporary living. David?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a zoning text amendment to section 3.190 of the city's zoning ordinance. And what this does is recognize the need for temporary onsite living arrangements resulting from the damage or destruction of the principal residential dwelling. The section authorizes temporary living in a recreational vehicle beyond the timeframes that are specified within the current subparagraph E of section 3.190. And this would be subject to several conditions as well as a zoning permit.
Can we, are there people here who would like to address the, this ordinance? The text amendment? Yes, would you care to?
Aye.
Alright, David?
Okay, the conditions first, that the RV shall be placed in the same property as the damaged or destroyed principal dwelling, or on an abutting property that is commonly owned. Next would be that the RV shall be connected to a dedicated electrical power source. Next, that the RV shall be connected to a water and sanitary sewer system or another temporary alternative acceptable to the city. And lastly, the RV shall adhere to the placement requirements of this section, that's where the setbacks or driveway placement. However, at the discretion of the zoning administrator, setback and locational requirements may be waived to accommodate the space for repair and construction efforts. So if they need room to work around that RV, the zoning administrator can waive those requirements temporarily. Then lastly, simply, they would need a zoning permit from the zoning administrator.
So at the conclusion of this hearing, we're going to move to discussion and take action if appropriate. So seeing no one else here to address this public hearing, we'll close the public hearing at 7:04 PM. And now I would open discussion and the opportunity to take action if appropriate to recommend to City Council to approve or not adopt, excuse me, to adopt or not adopt an amendment to the Ferrisburg zoning ordinance, adding section 3.190 G temporary living. Would anyone care to start the discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is, would be a recommendation to Council, or is this? Okay, recommendation to Council, okay.
I think we all recall the, how this came to the Planning Commission, and I think we've come up with a very workable recommendation, workable plan, setting reasonable boundaries, but also trying to make our community flexible and helping a homeowner who's in this situation. So if there's no further discussion, the Chair would entertain a motion to make the recommendation to Council to adopt this amendment.
I'll make a motion to recommend to City Council to adopt an amendment to the Ferrisburg zoning ordinance, adding section 3.190 G temporary living.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The recommendation passes. And let's see, the revised section eight is now the discussion on cell towers. Is there a representative from Verizon here tonight? Yes. Bill, do you want to introduce this, the person who's here tonight?
Logan Phillips.
Alright. Mr. Phillips, just come up and introduce yourself. We're looking forward to hearing you.
Absolutely, thank you for having me tonight. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Logan Phillips.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Everybody hear me? Great. Thank you for having me. My name is Logan Phillips. I'm with Telecat Engineering. We are a contractor for Verizon Wireless. Our reason for being here tonight is to discuss the 75-foot tower height max for cell and communication towers. We're here tonight to discuss Verizon. Wireless has a massive coverage gap in your community. As most of you probably are Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile users, I'm sure you have recognized the lack of cellphone coverage in certain areas of your community. Our goal here tonight is to work with you and answer any questions that you may have, to bring better clarity of Verizon's reasoning to be here and to install a cell tower to improve community safety and community life. To give a little backstory, Verizon has been working on this project with your community since 2017. There's been three different vendors, contractors, that have worked to find property, to work with zoning, and to find adequate and capable properties for a new cell tower. There is also one other BTS company, which is a tower company. Their name is Blue Sky Towers. They basically will build the tower for Verizon. They have also reviewed your area as well. All vendors have come to the same conclusion that a tower cannot adequately be built in this community to serve Verizon's engineers' needs at a 75-foot tower height max. Is it okay if I provide you guys documents and bring them over to you? So the map that you are looking at, this is a coverage gap map. The red on this map is showing lack of coverage. Anything you see color in yellow and red is showing coverage holes that Verizon has. Now, as you notice, this is along the North Shore Drive. This is a lot of communities, a lot of homes, Ottawa County Park, and your park as well, with the pickleball and the soccer fields. As you can see, as the darker the red, the worse the coverage holes are. Those are issues where multiple dropped calls, your phone may not work at all, you could be in SOS mode. So as you can see, this is a massive safety concern. So one thing I want to lead off with is, I understand, working in this industry, speaking with multiple different zoning boards, cell towers are not perceived the way of what they actually do. Cell towers and wireless communications are infrastructure in this country at this point. We're in 2025. Everybody has a smartphone. Everybody has access to the World Wide Web and everything they could need. But more importantly, it's access to safety, E911, emergencies, cops, ambulances, fire trucks. Those are things that are critical necessities across our country. And at the map that I provided, any of those red spots, yellow spots are areas that Verizon has dropped calls, has issues, and areas you may not be able to reach emergency services, which is critical in this day and age. So, you know, we like to say telecommunications are like your water, your electricity, your sewer. In this day and age, everybody has a phone. That's how we contact our family, emergency services. So as you can see on that map, there is massive issues in your community from Verizon's standpoint. The second map I'd like to show you... I'll bring them over. So I want to eliminate some confusion. The engineering system at Verizon is not as easy and clean as you would think. So this map is the opposite color spectrum. So red on the previous map that you looked at is bad. On this map, this is showing on your, there is two sides to this map. One of them shows a current coverage. The other one shows you coverage at a proposed 250-foot tower along North Shore Drive. So on your map, the blue area, the light blue area, is weak coverage. Dark blue is pretty much little to no coverage. That is where you're dropping calls continuously. Your phone pretty much basically works. As you can see, the dark blue on the current coverage map is along that residential drive on the water, where there's tourists and families, kids playing at the beach. So as you move from the dark blue and light blue, you come into green and yellow. That is where you begin to see more adequate coverage. Your texting, your phone calling begins to work a little bit better. And as you move into yellow and red, that is your prime coverage. That is where you can look at Instagram, Facebook with fast speeds. You can use your phone to search the internet. So as you can see, that is a comparison with the current coverage versus the 250-foot tower. So there is a tower to the north of your community and a tower to the south of your community. This new 250-foot exception will bridge the gap and pretty much improve the coverage for all of your residential area at the heart of the city, here at City Hall, and your tourist beachfront area.
Please, please speak into the mic as you're asking questions.
My question is, is from the first drawing, or first, this. How does this match up to it? Where does it match up? I don't...
This is Coast Guard Park, and I'm trying to figure this out too. Park's gotta be right here, right? So I think it's like... This is just a little more zoomed out. And I see Franklin, Washington. So this is in the Grand Haven too. But this one's more zoomed in on Ferrisburg specifically.
Now, the other document I just laid on your desk is the same map, but this one now shows your current ordinance at 75 feet. So the comparison is now a 75-foot tower versus a 250-foot tower. Again, the color coding, red is good, is great coverage. Yellow is good to great coverage. Blue and dark blue is little to no service. So as you can see, the side with the 75-foot tower is a massive change in coverage. The 250-foot tower covers your entire city and the beachfront and fills in a massive gap that is currently there. The 75-foot tower, that it does improve coverage on that road, but there are massive gaps in the residential community at the heart of the city. And as you can see along the coastline, there is still baby blue to dark blue colors involved with the 75-foot tower. So even with a 75-foot tower, there are still massive coverage holes. Anyone that's living on that North Shore Drive is really not going to see massive coverage change for them due to the dunes, the topography, and other aspects of the, the topography of the area. So the last document I'd like to show you, this is a map that shows all the existing towers around your community down in Grand Haven and north of the city. The red rings around these pin markers are a one-mile separation.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Do we have, I'm wondering about the Grand Haven residents that are on North Shore Drive, the southern part. Do we know what the coverage is there? Is there an issue there as well?
To my understanding, after speaking with Verizon, on the southern end of Grand Haven, you begin to pick up some of Verizon's existing service out of the Grand Haven area. So as you go north, you're moving away from that coverage and that tower, and that's when you begin to hit dead zones. So the more southern part, as you're moving towards Grand Haven, your coverage will improve. Verizon has active towers and active antennas in Grand Haven. As you move more north, that is where, when you meet, come to the city line and go up North Shore, that is when the service begins to drop off as they create greater distance from the existing cell towers. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess it does. Do we know what Grand Haven's height restriction is for cell towers? And where there's it?
I do know, I don't personally have their zoning ordinance memorized of what their tower, their height is, but on that map, there's actually heights. I apologize, some of them overlap, but there are heights. I do know there is a company named American Towers. They have a tower that's almost north as it comes to your city line with Grand Haven. They have a 190-foot tower right there at the edge of the community when you start to cross over into Ferrisburg. So that, with that tower, it is 190. To explain the tower heights a little bit, the 75-foot tower, there are 75-foot towers in other places. That's, you know, that's the reality of it. But the higher you go, the broader Verizon's coverage reaches. The more communities, the more houses it reaches. The shorter the tower, as you can see per the map, it fixes a smaller area. So with the 75-foot tower, in order for Verizon to provide the coverage, they need to bring better coverage and safety to your residents, they would need multiple 75-foot towers across your community. So the taller the tower, that the one tower that's taller allows there to be less towers across your community. So that is the biggest difference in height, is the higher they can go, they can reach a broader range of people rather than placing multiple towers in your community.
Okay, so this map, just to confirm, this map, you're saying that this dark area here is lack of service?
Correct, yeah. This map, it's a little confusing because the red means two different things. That map specifically is coverage issues by Verizon.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking, I actually live in one of these areas that we're saying is poor service. And I actually get good service where I am, and I walk in the neighborhood all the time, and I actually get pretty good service. But when I go into SOS mode, is when I go out here to North Beach Park.
Correct.
And this is where it's saying that there is good service.
Yeah.
On this map, it is. That's what, that's my point, is this map is saying that there is service there.
That map specifically is, it's a database that's used, so it, I mean, it may not, it may branch out to the water. So it's, there is lack of service there, but they put a certain radius in the mapping system to provide that document. So that very well could as easily be, they didn't put the range out far enough to show the lack of coverage. I apologize for the confusion.
So I guess my concern is, if the worst of the service is out on North Shore Drive, why are we looking so far inland?
So the best maps to look at the Verizon coverage is the two other blue, green, red, yellow maps that I provided. So if you look at the map that says the current coverage in your top right-hand corner of each box, the light blue and baby blue colors, it's more the colors you're looking for. Baby blue is very little service. Dark blue means major coverage gaps where you could be in SOS mode. So the plot maps, really, that's a more accurate representation of the lack of service and current coverage in the community.
Okay, so I guess that just goes back to my other question is, if the worst service is further to the west, why are we looking so far to the east as far as a placement of a tower?
Correct. So if you look, the colors are hard to see. Verizon radio engineers and their assistant performance engineers, their goal is to create a location that serves the community the best. So as the waterfront area is their top priority with the residents, the vacationers, the people that come to your community to visit, that is a top priority. That's where their biggest issue is. So on the other side of things, there are still massive coverage holes across the residential part of your community, more to the heart of the community and the highway. So the more they move, they keep moving to the, to the west, towards the water, that is going to now limit how service they can provide to the highway and the residents on the east side of the city. So their goal is to put a tower that balances their highest priority need, but also meet other needs of the highway and the residents across the eastern part of the community. So with those two things combined, this rough location on North Shore Drive is the most, is the prime location for the radio engineers to meet all of the coverages, to fix the gaps across the community.
Okay.
So I wonder, could you explain to the group, there's a location near 31 and Van Wagner to the southwest of that intersection, that we allow for a 300-foot tower. It's about a mile northeast of the proposed site. A 300-foot tower in that location, what, how would that serve the community? Is that, is that not something that's attractive, or is that not land that you can secure for the project?
Absolutely. I believe you're referring to the LI3 zone in the top of your community?
LI2.
Yeah, LI2, okay. Yes, I have reviewed that. The LI2 does allow 300-foot towers. When it comes to tower placement, really and truly, 100 feet can make a difference in Verizon's needs and meeting the needs of their customers. So with this being pretty much the, almost the opposite side of the city, it would not, it would not fix the issue along North Shore Drive, the community parks, where the campground is, the residence. A tower could go there per the zoning ordinance, but it would not fix the main issue, and all of the residents would still have the same issues they're having currently. One other note I'd like to bring up too, I was speaking with Verizon. Your city currently, in the Verizon internal database, has ranked the number two most dropped calls across Michigan, Indiana, and Kentucky, in all three states, across all, the entire state. In Verizon's coverage, Ferrisburg has the number two most dropped calls across three different states. This is the reasoning for Verizon wanting to work with you guys and find a solution to bring community safety and to resolve this issue with you guys. So that is a reason, they are making this a top priority. Verizon wants to work with you guys, wants to find a solution. My job, my job here tonight is to show you the need of a higher tower than 75 feet.
Well, but, but the, there are other issues that influence this, right? Cell phones, or strength of the signal, geography, congestion, network congestion. So it's not just our zoning that's making us number two. I mean, look at our, we've got dunes. Isn't that a huge influence, our geographical location?
It really does, it really does come down to tower height. So as I said earlier, Verizon could meet this need, but 75-foot tower, they would need five or six different towers across your entire community to solve this issue. So as you are correct, this past summer, I believe this is a very, a very successful year for your community and Grand Haven. With the influx of people that came in, this site was actually closer to eight or nine in the rankings and moved all the way to two after this past summer. So people coming in, more traffic. With this tower, this will allow a stronger service for more people. With, right now with the lack of coverage, when more people come into your community, everyone is fighting for that tower to the north and that tower to the south. These towers can get overloaded. Anything like you go to an NFL game, MLB game, anything like that, when your service starts to drop, that is due to a massive influx of people trying to use the same coverage. So this tower would actually help bridge the gap of those two towers and provide a cleaner and a more successful service across the board to all your residents and your tourists that are here. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If I may. What size are you looking for from a footprint standpoint?
Absolutely, yeah. So, yes. So Verizon typically would like to lease a 100-foot by 100-foot area. So relatively, it's small. That fits the entire foundation of the tower, and that fits all the equipment that would be needed. Verizon.
Next question. And that is, I've got an email in here from March, or August, I think it is, from Craig about the height and Verplank's property, 195 feet. How many sites are being looked at right now in Ferrisburg? I mean, which ones are, we've got one property owned on North Shore that's interested. Is that correct, Craig?
Yes, my understanding, yes.
Okay. Do we have any others?
That I'm aware of.
Any other options? Without our deed restrictions like in Coast Guard Park and everything else, that means some of those are out of the question?
Nothing city-owned.
But Verplank's potentially?
Potentially.
Have they been approached?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, no, there are multiple properties. I do understand that there are some deed restrictions of city properties on this road. There are other industrial properties as Verplank. We do have notes that there were some conversations with Verplank in the past, but inevitably, all of the projects and all of the recent vendors that have worked on this site for Verizon came inevitably to a dead end with the 75-foot tower height max, which is why I'm here today. But there are a few properties on that road that could be viable locations for a tower.
How high of a tower are you anticipating?
So that is the, that's the 250. Is the, a 250-foot tower would meet Verizon's needs. That would also allow a plenty enough room for a AT&amp;T, T-Mobile to join the tower. So the goal here, I understand from you guys, is to limit cell towers in your community for visual hindrance and those sort of things. A 250-foot tower would adequately hold any carrier that needs to add their equipment to the existing tower. But 250 is the optimal height that RF engineers have requested to meet the needs of the community.
So if you're talking about 100 by 100-foot lot, that does not leave a whole lot of room for setbacks. And some of the other ordinance that I've been looking at in neighboring communities, they require the same amount of setback as the height of the tower. So we're talking about a 50-foot setback or less for a 250-foot tower in a pretty densely populated residential area, where I know ideally, this would be more in an industrial area. So, I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, what are their options, you know? And are we confident that that is going to go over those dunes and service the area that's in the most distress?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So the map, the 250 map does show, this is an accurate database that Verizon uses to show where the coverage would go. Those, there are some tall dunes. Again, that kind of pushes us back to the 250. That's why we're not talking about a 150 or a 170. We're talking about a 250 that will clear a lot of the dunes and a lot of the area to reach past tree foliage and reach across the community as best as possible. To answer your question about setbacks, yes, there are, in your ordinance, I do see it's one foot per tower, per foot on setback. So that is something that we have to take into account in our property search. There are methods, these tower manufacturers that actually design these towers, they can be designed to self-collapse and be engineer-stamped approval that the tower would collapse in the event that it would collapse within a certain 30-foot area, 40-foot area. Now granted, these towers, you know, if you see any sort of footage from the coast on hurricane damage, a lot of the times, some of the things that you only see left standing are cell towers. They are very durable, they're very sturdy. They are very durable, they're very sturdy, there's a lot of engineer stamps that go behind it. But to answer your question about setbacks, that can be arranged and designed on the front end for a self-collapsing tower.
Yes, speaking of design, so this cell tower, what does it look like? The typical cell tower? I've seen some that are disguised as trees. Like, what are you proposing?
This, at this point, would be a, what we call a self-support tower or a lattice tower. So, there are no guy wires. You don't have those long guy wires coming out. This is, the monopole is your typical steel single pole that you see in downtown areas. This is more of a pyramid, 3D triangle shape, and it's all, you know, it's steel, non-rustive steel. So, it's a self-support tower, so there's no guy wires. So, that's the type of tower to be proposing here.
Yeah. All right, can I ask one other question? So, when I'm looking at this right here, in this area, this is, this is the location, the proposed location or potential location. And that is surrounded by pretty decent coverage, and this is all flatland. So, my concern is, again, trying to get out here where the service is like SOS, and that's where all the dunes are, are there any other locations that would be more appropriate?
Right.
That would be right in the middle of a residential with no setbacks?
Right. So, again, the reason they want to be there is there are issues on the west side of the city, but there are also issues and dead zones on the east side of the city with, there are still residential and there is the highway and some of the shopping. Verizon's goal is to meet all of these needs with one location rather than coming back and trying to build multiple towers to fix areas. That is the optimal location that Verizon engineers have reviewed and approved to solve the needs of this community, to get this community off that top 10 drop-call list.
Mr. Chair, Spring Lake Township is right out there by Heartside Lodge. Is there any movement in the township to allow a cell tower out that way?
I have not had any discussions regarding that, no. I don't know the answer to that.
Has that been looked at out in the township? Spring Lake Township?
Exactly.
Yeah, by Lake Hills Elementary. There's tremendous amount of property out there. We just don't have property.
Right, yeah. And, you know, there are other locations around the city that can be looked at, but again, this location, I understand there are some residents, there is some industrial down there, there is the county-owned property that has no residential properties on it. Again, this is the optimal position for Verizon.
I guess, let me rephrase my question, and that is, have a cell tower out in the township by Lake Hills Elementary to service the dune area? And then you're saying that there's dead zones within the city of Ferrisburg? We could place one further closer to 31.
Towards the east of the highway?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Not 200 feet, but potentially shorter because you're putting in two towers rather than one. One to service the dunes out in the township. And would love to know if that's been looked at.
To my understanding, it has not, but this project has been going on since 2017. So, you know, I'm more recent to the project, but my, again, my understanding, Verizon's goal is to build the least amount of towers in your community to save the aesthetics. So, the one-tower solution is the cleanest option to limit the amount of towers across your community.
I mean, you're a business, so it may be the cleanest option, but it also probably is the cheapest option. And I'm saying, hey, there may be a two-tower solution, one of which involves our community and one of which that involves one that's closer to the problem area that Commissioner Tuggles is talking about. That may be in the township. It might not be the cheapest solution, but you might be able to get by with shorter towers so that we can save our views and still service the community.
To the, is the township you're referring to, is that to the north?
It's to the west. If you, here, come here, come here and I'll show you. This is all township out in here. This way. Ferrisburg goes down. The city manager could probably explain it to you better than I could.
He's talking like, like, oh, he's not much. Yeah, it's kind of like here is what he's referring to. The line is like right over here somewhere.
Just a thought.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, and I'll make a note of that for sure and run that by them.
There's apartments out there, a huge apartment complex in the township, as well as Heartside Lodge, which is what we call hospice facility, long-term care.
And then there's all that property that was going to be developed by BOSS too, behind Lake Hill School, between Lake Hills and Ottawa, Ottawa Dunes. And then there's all that county-owned property too, across from North Beach Park. And then there's all the Ottawa Sands too. BOSS.
Yeah. I'd like to just make a note that the planning commission has been supplied copies of letters from residents in support of your proposal and testifying in various ways to the lack of good reliable signal and how it's a safety concern and also interferes with trying to communicate with your family and try to communicate with any, on businesses, on business calls as well. If there are residents here who have supplied letters, could you stand up, please? Thank you. And next to you is Mr. Buck, I believe, who also wrote a letter to us. Is anyone here tonight in opposition to this discussion? Thank you.
So, the proposed area that's optimal for the Verizon engineers is this general area, maybe just even a little bit more to the west. So, you have the industrial area down here.
That's North Shore Drive.
This is the mobile home park?
Yes. So, as of now, we're still working with properties to find an optimal position for the tower. But again, the conversation tonight here is really tower height max, but this is the area we're looking to be in, you know, in this general area. You know, the farther east you go, the more homes there are there. So, our goal would be stay somewhere over in this area to avoid as many homes as possible to get this thing, you know, tucked away as much as possible and to still provide the adequate service that Verizon needs to provide. There's not specific location picked out yet. There have been multiple different contractors and Verizon has worked on this for years. There have been a few properties approached, but at the end of the day, it came down to the top height, 75 feet. There's still not, there's not a one specific property that has been picked at. Yes, ma'am, correct, yeah.
Craig and David, I have a question for you, if you'd just stand by for a moment. Assuming the planning commission wanted to advance the idea that we would have a, for the sake of argument, a single 200-foot, 200-foot tower in this area, could you review, I understand one direction might be something that we would do as planning commission with perhaps a text amendment, and the other might have something to do with trying to work with zoning, the zoning board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. The two options available would be for either the company to apply for a text amendment or the planning commission could initiate a text amendment to consider alternative sites, alternative lands, and higher tower heights. So, that could be a text amendment that would require probably a meeting to work through different options as a work session between us, a public hearing, and then ultimately a recommendation to the city council. The other option is if they narrowed it down to a specific site, they could potentially request a zoning board of appeals relief. So, section 3.140 states that the zoning board of appeals shall be authorized to permit the placement of an antenna, satellite dish, and so on in locations not expressly authorized by the ordinance, provided they demonstrate bona fide documentation of adequate reception may only be achieved through relocation and placement and so on. Now, that paragraph is not entirely clear about height. It's more location-based. Someone, you know, you could argue that it's location-based because they need a tower of 250 feet. So, it's a location of a 250-foot tower that the zoning board of appeals could allow in an alternative site rather than the LI2 district, which is, that's the only area where we allow over 75 feet. So, this, so two options, text amendment. Alternatively, the zoning board of appeals could potentially grant relief based on that paragraph. At the same time, that paragraph is not entirely clear. The zoning board could also interpret that paragraph to see if they do have the authority to waive the height as well as the location. So, I think you could probably argue two different ways on that paragraph on what authority the ZBA has on the matter. But the fact is that paragraph is there and it is anticipating that there's a, what I believe to be a non-variance relief route for cell tower waivers, location, potentially height.
David, wouldn't it be better to do something with a little more gravitas instead of having a variance? You have to look to the future. There may be future need that would change, that we could actually change the ordinance itself. Wouldn't that be a wiser thing to do than just say, let's rule on this one variance and then 10 years from now they have to do it again, or two years, or one year, or whatever?
Sure, I think that the ZBA is certainly a more immediate solution, but that would require them to have a specific site in mind and a specific proposal, and then the zoning board being comfortable with making that decision to provide relief. And, but, you know, I think, yes, a zoning text amendment is certainly a more longer-term, comprehensive look at the entire issue.
I think it needs to go before council. I don't think it should be a ZBA issue. I think that should be something that is decided by elected officials myself, but that's...
This is one more point. The, in the, that paragraph M is also somewhat concerning because it simply says that the zoning board has this relief waiver authority, but typically, a cell tower is going to go through a special land use process through planning commission and the city council for approval. So, it's not clear if this paragraph means that the zoning board can just approve it and then you don't see it and the city council doesn't see it through the normal means. So, this paragraph M is something that I think we need to maybe chat a bit more about and maybe run it by the city's attorney as well.
Craig, would you address the timetable hypothetically? If there was support among the council, the commission to pursue the text amendment, could we get that done this year, looking at our schedule of meetings and city councils?
So, they would have to probably draft something up for the planning commission to review. That could be done at a November meeting. If they're satisfied with the language that's being proposed, then they could schedule a public hearing that probably wouldn't be till December. And then the city council could look at it. The planning commission will hold a public hearing in December 5th or 4th. The city council could look at it at first meeting in December, or probably the third weekend, December. So, city council probably adopted the first part of the year.
So, we've had some discussion here tonight. Do we have more questions for the representative, Mr. Phillips? I think you can sit down, sir. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, guys, for the time.
So, I'd like to take the chair's prerogative to suggest a question for us to consider. David has mentioned one option would be to refer this matter to the zoning board of appeals, but personally, the way he characterized the questions, it sounds a little bit to me like we would be passing the buck and it would be an uncertain resolution. I would like to ask the commission if there is support for the possible approach of a text amendment in which we would ask David to prepare something and we would have a work session to review it at our next meeting.
I would be in support of that, especially if we could have some potential sites actually identified for us so that, if you're a concrete thinker, you need, you need to see these things before you. You can't just say it's west and east and north and south. It would be helpful to have some actual sites identified.
I agree, Regina. I'm uneasy not knowing the site located.
Mr. Chair, David, if we limit, or if we say you can do 250-foot tower in whatever zoning or whatever area, does that mean 200-foot tower they could put anywhere? Or do we have control over location?
Sure.
Rather than ZBA saying, this site, we approve a tower for this site at 250 feet?
Yes, so, you would have the authority to designate to the zoning district, location, height, and any other parameters you might want to add to it. So, the area that they're targeting is generally in the location of RG3 zone land, Port Industrial and LI1, as well as Mobile Home Park. So, that's really that kind of pocket that was identified on the map. You know, everything else around it really doesn't, Coast Guard Park, Ottawa Sands, I mean, I don't see it, can't put it on the city property there and I don't think it would go in accounting.
What I'm questioning is if we say, hey, you could build up to a 300-foot tower in those areas, can anybody put up a 300-foot tower anywhere in those areas? Or do they have to come before and get approval?
Yes, so, you would, you would...
Because the 250-foot tower would be conforming.
Yes. You could still have it be a special land use or site plan review. So, there would, there would not be an administrative approval route unless you're that comfortable with cell towers that you felt that you could delegate it to the zoning administrator. But in most cases, cell towers are going to run through a special land use process which goes through the planning commission and the city council.
Okay.
Can I clarify?
Yes, please.
Sorry. So, I'm, maybe I'm confused, but I thought we did have a proposed location that's very close to the corner of North Shore and Parkwood. And that's what I see highlighted here. And that, it's a kind of a skinny lot and is, and I guess the property owner here wanted to talk about that or?
Mr. Phillips? You're telling, would you care to take the microphone again? So, the question is, is there, or isn't there a particular site in mind?
At this time, that site was discussed by a previous vendor working for Verizon. That is not, at this time, a candidate that's active conversations with, but it can be re-approached if, as we move forward with the project, and this is a project that we are willing to work with you guys and you guys are willing to work with Verizon. But that is not a current active negotiation at this time.
I thought, in last month's packet, I thought we had a property owner that was asking to pretty much initiate this.
You're just wondering, has the contractor spoken with that person about it?
I'm just, I just wanted to clarify for everybody that, in my opinion, that there was a property, a property that was highlighted for us to consider. was highlighted for us to consider.
There was, but he indicated that the conversation was from a previous person.
There was a property interested, there was someone that was interested in having the tower and their property, but those conversations have not moved any further at this point. At this point, we were wanting to work with you guys on the tower height. And if it's something that is doable between Verizon and the planning commission, those conversations can continue and that could be something that could be presented to you guys as well.
So you just need, essentially, you just need us to approve 250-foot or 300-foot somewhere, and then that would give you an area to work with that, hey, in this zoning district are potential properties?
Yes, sir, yeah. The goal tonight is this is the area we're looking to be in and this is the tower height needed to resolve the issue.
Craig, I feel like we have consensus. I'm not quite sure the form of a motion that we might need. Or is this just directing?
I think we're just having discussions tonight, right?
Yes, but we're directing David to bring us something that we could have a work session on next month.
So if consensus of planning commission is to look at a text amendment, we would ask Mr. Drosick to prepare some language. Then we'd have an agenda item in November to schedule a public hearing if the planning commission is acceptable with that language.
I believe that's, I believe that's where we are.
Yep.
Yes. Okay, so we would like to, we're trying to work with you and we're trying to address the concerns of the community. And the direction we think would best remedy this is for us to ask our city planner to amend the language and bring it back to us for discussion. And that does not automatically mean we're going to approve it, but it means we're looking at ways to try to advance and find a solution. Have we given you clear direction, David? All right. So can we conclude the, this discussion and move on to the next item?
Yeah, as long as there was no public input.
Yes, would someone else from the audience like to address this? Please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, my name's Aida Tanaka. I'm a resident at 17400 North Shore Estates Drive. We, my husband and I did submit a written request and we want to endorse support of having increased cellular coverage. Not sure how to address the issues we have about specific location and zoning, but I want to emphasize two things. One is the safety piece that you're all seriously considering and that our representatives from Verizon Contractor have brought forward are very serious and real at North Shore Beach. My husband and I had the misfortune of witnessing a recovery of a 16-year-old boy's drowning there two summers ago. And we were grateful that there was a first responder, emergency response. And we're not entirely certain that if it came more quickly, there could have been a different result. But I just want to remind everybody that we have a real, living, breathing lake that is affecting our visitors and our residents. I live year-round and have several neighbors there in my area. And as, we've been talking a lot about tourists and visitors. But those of us who live there full-time experience the same issues. And I also want to draw your attention to the two phones I walked up here with because those of us who live there full-time are sometimes issued a phone by our employers. Having regular coverage here, which I don't, and this phone, which, forgive me, is a Verizon line, frequently dropped when my employer expects to speak to me in the evenings, on weekends, and even during the day if I have the fortune to remote work, which I don't often do because my coverage is not reliable. And this is how I pay the property taxes that bring the revenue to the city. So it goes beyond the safety issues and just having a full and income-producing life in our homes. And so Steve Tanaka and I would like to request your favorable consideration here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Tom Cash, 17838 Short Street. I'm one of those people on the east side. We're from where I move is, at Van Wagoner, off to the southeast. We're like a little south of there. Sitting in my house, I sometimes have one bar of Verizon. And frequently, when I'm making, try to make a phone call, I get, call failed. I am glad that Verizon is at least enough to step up and admit they have issues. I went down and talked to T-Mobile. Oh, yeah, we got 5G coverage. Couple hours later, I had a service guy over at the house. We're standing in my driveway, he's got T-Mobile, one bar of service. So I think the other guys have the same issue. So if you do put up a big one, get everybody on it, but especially Verizon first. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Buck, and I'm a resident, 17497 North Shore Estates. I used to live down by the river in Grand Haven, where the cell tower on the ski hill covers that area very well. You have huge mattress antennas on it, and it works real well. So when I moved down the street, a couple miles, built the house just to the north of Aida. No coverage. And I've been trying to get Verizon to get a searching there. And they said, oh, we've been working with the city, trying to get a tower there. And then I found out recently that the 75-feet height is what's killing the project. So without it, we won't get a tower. And we won't have service. You don't have service here. Doesn't work. So please consider it. I live and work there, too, and obviously pay taxes for the city.
Thank you. So I think we've got a good plan here. So I'd like to close the cell phone tower discussion and move on to our next work session, which has been renumbered so that it's now the session concerning signs. David, could you lead us into this discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the city received a request for a freestanding sign for a non-conforming multi-tenant building. This building, North Shore, is both within the RG2 district as well as LI1. So the residential portion, this site is just on the south side of the road. Over the zoning map, parcels along the road are all RG2. And then this parcel is split, and a portion of it to the rear is LI1. So within the RG2 zoning district, the non-residential uses can have a wall sign. So there's uses like non-conforming, non-residential uses, churches, schools, other uses within residential zoning districts are simply not allowed to have a freestanding identification sign in a residential zoning district. They can't have a wall sign, though. It is fairly common for non-residential uses within residential zoning districts to have the ability to put up a freestanding identification sign. So that's fairly common in zoning ordinances. It doesn't mean that it needs to be the exact same size as what could be found in a commercial zoning district or illuminated in the same manner. A lot of times, it's toned back a little bit in terms of its size and heights, and sometimes there are lighting restrictions. So the question for the planning commission, based on the recent request, is would you consider looking into a zoning text amendment to allow for freestanding identification signs on sites for non-residential uses in residential zoning districts?
Would anyone care to start the discussion?
I will. And mine is just an observation of the property. It doesn't look, like the property itself doesn't look residential. It looks like a business. So I just feel like it needs a sign. I don't know. When I went by it, it just seems weird that it's a split zone like that. Do we have a lot of lots like that, where we have two different zonings?
Not a lot. These homes on North Shore Drive, a road, first 300 feet is all RG2 residential. Anything to the south is LI1.
I feel sympathetic toward this request. Is this really the best way to try to remedy this problem? If we, if we supported this request, is to do a text amendment?
That's correct. It was our opinion that it could not be considered by the zoning board because it would be more of a use-type variance, because it's just not a sign that's allowed there. So the zoning board could not authorize a sign that's not permitted in that zoning district. So they can only consider dimensional-type variances. So really, the only option is to review a zoning text amendment through this thing.
So it seems like the commission is supportive of what you're trying to bring to us, David? Craig, so do we need a motion or just a referral?
No, we would ask Mr. Drosick to draft some language. I'm not sure if the planning commission wants to see that language first, or if they're willing to schedule a public hearing on that. I'm not ready at this time for the November meeting.
Go ahead with the public hearing. I think, I think we're giving you a...
Public hearing or a draft? Okay, so you would be comfortable with a public hearing next time? And this would be fairly simple because we could simply say that the, so we already allow for ground signs for residential subdivisions, manufactured home parks, and multiple family complexes. So that's one per entrance, 32 square feet, five feet from the right-of-way, 15 feet from side property lines, and no higher than six feet. So that's, those are reflected in the points below. I think that's really a good baseline, just to consider. I mean, all you have to do really is add non-residential uses to the title block in the table, and that's probably all you would need to do. So it's a pretty straightforward, simple text amendment.
Good, good. Then I think we're comfortable scheduling a public hearing on your expected draft language. It sounds like a pretty simple fix.
And then still, during the hearing or review, as you were able to think about this and look at those requirements, you can always make tweaks to those after the public hearing as well.
Great, thank you. I think we're ready to close the work session and move into... Are we ready for the work session on housing now? Okay. David? I just want, I just want to mention that I called you this afternoon and maybe expressed a little frustration that we're not getting, you know, so I will confess that I haven't had a chance to review your materials because it's so, I'll just speak, I'm sure everyone would like to have the opportunity to review the materials in advance. So I would not assume that we have all reviewed it in advance in this case.
Sure, yes, I expect, no one had a chance to review the slides for this evening. I wanted to get them out to you just so that as, after we talk about tonight, you can look back and see the research and the block-by-block analysis that we're going through right now. So right now, this residential component is fairly complex and we really need to get it right in terms of understanding residential blocks to make sure any changes we make make sense. And it's a little bit more complicated than the downtown zoning districts and commercial districts that we discussed over the last few meetings. So with that, I think, one, I talked to Craig a little bit this afternoon as well. I think we should continue to proceed with the residential block analysis, but if you would like drafts of zoning text recommendations for our previous presentations for our downtown districts, general commercial, for commercial service, we could also get that moving and maybe move that at that step quicker than the first draft of the residential district. So, and we did address this a couple months ago, whether you wanted to just talk about everything and then receive one comprehensive list of recommendations for all 10, or if you wanted to move forward with a chunk and then begin the next chunk after that's heard by, through a public hearing. So I guess you don't need to decide that now, but maybe toward the end, you can give me some direction if you want to prioritize our previous conversations for the next meeting while I continue on with this residential material, residential district material.
Okay.
Okay, so... Just one moment, we're trying to get the, we can always... Okay, so this evening, I wanted to give kind of, this is more of a progress report just to see what I'm working through now, as well as to get some initial reactions on some of the materials. So actions, well, we're going to talk about two different things. Actions five and seven are somewhat related, and then also action six, which will be the second set of slides. So action five, as you recall, is to consider attached housing, such as duplexes, townhouses, row houses in RG1 and RG2 zoning districts. And then also to look at the lot sizes and lot width for attached housing, such as duplexes, townhouses, and row houses, as well as for multifamily. So the RG1, RG2 zoning districts allow for detached, single-family dwellings. Two-family dwellings are permitted in RG2, but it's a double-sized lot. So, you know, you could do, you see, in RG2, it's 7,000 square feet for a single-family dwelling. You could do a duplex with 14,000 square feet. So it's basically, you know, the same, there's no increase in density. There's, it's just, you need a double lot to do a double home. So what we are going to do through this project is consider whether or not other types of attached housing is appropriate in RG1 and RG2. And then we also consider locational requirements, other considerations. We don't have to open, like, for instance, if we're looking at RG2 and there are certain areas in RG2 that you may feel are appropriate for a row of townhouses, but not in another area, we could figure out how to code that appropriately and probably do that without having to create a new zoning district as well. You're creating a new zoning district is always also something we can do. It adds a little bit of extra layer complication because then we have to actually rezone property. But we can also have locational requirements for certain land uses. So you could say in RG2, we're okay with four-unit townhouses on this particular road in this particular part of the city. So that's a conversation I think we'll maybe chat a little bit about tonight or definitely at future meetings as well. tonight, or definitely at future meetings as well. So, for this first set of slides, for five and seven, the objectives will be just to familiarize ourselves with the areas of focus, and to look at a few case studies in appropriate locations. So, again, this is going to be a lot of information. You have this in your inboxes, so I encourage you to study some of this after the meeting, and then we'll continue the conversation at our next meeting. So, again, we're looking at RG2 and RG1. This is the west side, the westernmost RG1 properties, and then the orange is RG2. So, this would be areas where, right now, in RG1 is primarily single-family, same with RG2. In some cases, we allow for two-family. Then, kind of the central part of the city, we have RG2 as well. We have some historic platted areas there, in kind of the central city area, west of 31, near Third and Maple. And then, as we move east, we have our... Primarily, this is all our RG1, as well as we have the overlay district as well, along the lake shore in certain locations. So, these are the areas that would be the target areas for considering duplexes, triplexes, rowhouses. And the idea here is that if you're open to attached housing, you know, this is not multifamily apartments. They're primarily going to be rowhouses, side-by-side. They're able to be owned individually through condo-type ownership. It's not multifamily, but attached, single-family dwellings. And I have a number of examples to show you over the next couple of slides. Okay, so, I have probably about 10 or so examples here, just for your consideration. And we're starting with the densest. So, I have a couple of examples from Grand Haven, Grand Rapids, East Grand Rapids, a few other communities. And just to give you an idea of what is attached, single-family housing. So, this is 241 Jackson in Grand Haven, and so these are attached townhomes. This is a little bit unique of a site, because it's deeper, and it has two rows of attached townhouses. The lot's about a third of an acre, and there's eight units on this lot. It's 108 feet deep or wide, and 135 in width. And so, the total amount of the square footage per unit is 1,797 square feet per unit. So, that actually calculates out to 24 units per acre. So, that's a fairly dense project. But as you can see, we actually showed this picture in previous conversations, it doesn't look like a significantly dense project. And you'll actually see later on, I show a couple duplex examples, to where, by its lot size, it would be 11 units per acre, but it's simply a duplex on a small lot. And so, when we think about density, density numbers are always scary, when we see things, you know, eight, 12, 16, 20 units per acre. That's a lot of concern with that, but it's always helpful to see what it actually looks like. So, like this site, if you're familiar with it, would equal to about 24 units per acre.
Can I ask you, do you know how much those cost?
I am not familiar with the pricing, but I'd assume they would be four to five hundred, maybe. I just...
Yeah, because I think we're concerned about affordable housing here, and some of these are not going to be affordable.
That's correct. The overall effort is part of this... Well, the grant is focused on housing supply, and so obviously, supply is one factor in the entire conversation about housing affordability, and the housing crisis in Michigan, and nationwide. So, between supply, as well as some of our other recommendations, like ADUs, accessory dwellings, or allowing for smaller houses on smaller lots, single-family detached, like, that's where you might find some lower prices. Or between, you know, previous meetings, we talked about apartment complexes, so having rental options as well. So, it's all... There's a number of different things in play here. But yes, their owner-occupied townhouses, you know, there could be, you know, these might not always be affordable, depending on how you're developing them. So, as we... We're going to go down in density as we look at these examples. So, and when you look at these, and as you, after the meeting, as you have a chance to work through the 50 or 60 pages I sent you today, think about these types of examples as relates to RG1 and RG2. And we may find that these are... We need to tone it back even more. But as we go down the list, you may see, find a certain breakpoint to where you see things as maybe to be appropriate. Okay, the next, this is East Grand Rapids. This is on Bagley, right across from the high school. So, these are, they're two buildings next to each other, eight units per building. And this is about 17 and a half units per acre. These are both side-by-side. I believe they have some over-and-under arrangements as well. So, still, it's still, you know, a fairly bulky building. It still looks like a lot, and maybe a bit too much for RG1, RG2. But we're beginning to drop down in density as we work through these case studies. This is Blodgett Street. This is Cherry Street area, East Hills, Grand Rapids. So, these are actually duplexes. So, along this row of houses, there's five duplex houses, and this density is, let me see, 13.9 units per acre. So, in this case, there's five, two-family, so 10 total units. And so, as we begin to drop down, you know, we see that it's a little bit more of like a house scale, or something that might be more appropriate to, you know, infill in neighborhoods, or to be along, you know, maybe it's a major corridor road, rather than in internal neighborhoods. But you can see, you start to step down in intensity. As we look, I think in any case, if we're looking at allowing attached housing in these two zoning districts, we really need to consider the height and the scale, and make sure that, you know, I think three stories is too much for townhouses. I mean, you certainly have urban townhouses in urban areas, that three stories makes a lot of sense. But something like this certainly fits in a neighborhood context more appropriately than, well, than some other examples. So, that's kind of got a house scale to it, even though it is, it's fairly dense at 13.9 units per acre. Now, this is another example of two-family units in East Grand Rapids, on Crosswell, near Gaslight Village. So, there's one lot, and there's, right in the middle there, there's this one and this one. These are two, two-family dwellings. And so, considering the lot size of just under 13,000 square feet with four units, that density is 13.75 an acre. And so, this is what it looks like in terms of... Again, the look of these, two stories with rooftop space in a flat roof, I don't think a lot of people would think that's appropriate, in possibly in your neighborhood areas. Maybe in some, but not others, where you have a different type of, you know, built environment. So, but again, this is more of a study of density and dimensional requirements.
Looks like downtown Charlevoix. Three stories tall condos on one side of the park.
Well, that, this could be, as opposed to the residential area, this could be, it looks similar to what we were looking at for the downtown area. A little bit more...
Yes, yes.
Yes.
That's a really great point. Because we did identify a couple areas, especially kind of the north, like, when we looked at downtown area, kind of the northern end of that, where it was transitioning to residential, rather than having larger multifamily buildings there, we thought that maybe, like, the attached townhouse-type transitional area would make better sense. And so, I think, as I was looking through these examples, I started to have the exact same thought about, some of these might be more appropriate in our commercial area downtown, as it transitions northward to residential. So...
Could you just tell me where? Where on Pine Street are you going to... I'm all for addressing the housing issue, but we have very little land available. And are you thinking, well, someday Johnson Boiler Works will be gone, and we can put these there? Because that's Larry Heinz's choice. He owns that property. He will decide what to do with it, if he decides not to have Boiler Works there. So, I think these are all well and good, but I would like to see the land that we have available, potentially available, and how these are actually really going to fit in here. Because this might be fine on Pine Street, but right now, there's absolutely no place that I can think of that it could go.
Yep. And as discussed, especially during the Lippings conversation, we are not saying that this is going to happen, and we're just allowing for redevelopment to happen. You know, there's not a lot of undeveloped land. You know, in our master plan, well, one of the original drafts of master plan, we identified some of our, maybe eight or 10 areas that were over three acres in size. So, there's not a lot of larger areas for new development. So, a lot of this is going to be more infill-type redevelopment. So, you know, you could have an aging house, to where maybe it's two in a row, and somebody buys them and knocks down two aging houses that are maybe to the point where they can't be salvaged or renovated. That's where somebody could put in something new in the appropriate area, maybe attached housing, or something a little bit denser.
I think we need to make that very clear to people. We're not developers. We're trying to give people the option. That's how we got in trouble before, when people are going, "Oh, you're going to tear down nothing." No, we're not. We're trying to have zoning that looks to the future, so that we can accommodate housing. So, a lot of what we're doing now is basically going to be using existing facilities or renovation of some kind, right? Because we don't have much land. I mean, it's like 18 acres or something that we've got to develop. Not much.
Yes, there's not a lot of greenfield-type open space for new housing developments. Most of it's going to be block-by-block, or lot-by-lot type redevelopment, or infill.
But Pine Street definitely could use a refresh. I mean, there are aging homes, I feel like, on Pine Street that could be updated. So, yeah.
Yeah. And the area would be north of Fifth Street, because we had discussed in the previous meeting, off of Pine Street, west of Pine Street, north of Fifth. That area is still zoned, core commercial CC, but it's primarily residential. So, that could be something to where it's maybe more of a, you know, already, somebody could put a commercial building there, but it's kind of a residential character. So, we could consider these types of attached housing scenarios, north of Fifth Street, in that core commercial area.
So, the challenge is really to look to the future, as to what possibly can be, and still maintain the small-town atmosphere that people have surveyed said that that's what they want, right? So, you have to look 10, 20, 30 years in the future. Are we still going to want that small-town atmosphere? And if we do, how are we going to protect it with appropriate zoning, while still giving people affordable housing? Well, some kind of housing. Right now, people can't afford to live here if they work here. They have to have added cost of childcare and transportation, because we don't have enough housing for them here to live. So, we have to address it somehow. But we have to also look to the future, in maintaining our small-town atmosphere, which is a difficult task.
Agreed.
David, if I could just make a sidebar comment at this point. Craig, and Regina, and I all participated recently in a Tri-City Chamber of Commerce Town Hall on affordable housing. And it's very, very interesting, and I think we learned a lot. And the lack of affordable housing, or just housing in this area, is impacting the whole area's ability to attract and retain good employees, because there's not enough housing here. So, it's potentially a drag on the survival and viability of our area. And so, it really, I'm just echoing what you're saying, I believe. And Craig also spoke on a panel there about our efforts, and the project that is underway, adjacent to us here, the 16-unit property. And I also attended a Lake Shore Climate Forum in Muskegon, and heard the mayor of Muskegon say that they have changed their zoning districts, and so, there's no longer any single-family zoning district in Muskegon. They all will allow duplexes or rowhouses, subject to other considerations. So, we're not alone in what we're trying to do here.
It's interesting, because there are several states now that have enacted statute that prevents single-family residential zoning. And I don't see that at this point, like, statewide. I haven't seen any traction on that. I'm sure their conversations have been had in Michigan, but I don't see that as something... Michigan communities really lobby for local control, and that's one thing that would probably be tough in Michigan to do statewide. But I think we do have some local examples, as you referenced, where single-family zoning is being phased out in certain communities.
One thing that I found, just, this is staggering to me, $87,000 is the median income in our county. The average, that kind of income, you can afford a house that's about, let's see, $242,320,000. The median house price is $415,000. And that 87 grand is probably two people working, not one. So, I think that's something that we really need to consider and look at when we're looking at housing. We've got to have some kind of options here. By 2030, we'll need 3,938 rental units to satisfy local needs, and we are on track for people with incomes, we aren't on track for people with incomes under $51,000. And that's 2,200 units of that would have to apply to those people. And we can't do it. We don't have homes for those people, or ways to have them even rent an apartment. So, it's pretty staggering.
Please continue, David. I know we want to get through this, so...
Sure, sure. Just going to go through some additional examples. So, this is 320 Jackson in Grand Haven. And so, this, I think we're starting to get to maybe a scale in density that makes sense for some of our RG1 and RG2 areas. This is a small, a site of .4 acres. There are, these are attached townhouses, side-by-side. There are five total. I believe their garages are actually, it's a rear-loaded building with some surface parking behind. And when you start to look at this, I mean, it begins to be more of that residential house scale. So, that's a five-unit, side-by-side building, but, you know, you could almost picture something. I think the height may be a little, you know, that's a strong two-and-a-half story building there. In that, you know, that might be a, might have some issues fitting in in certain areas, but it's getting down to that residential scale. You know, I think, just to back up a few, just looking at this example, I think, you know, these duplexes, even though the density is fairly high, if you had maybe adjusted the density, you know, so it's a little bit lower possibly, but having, or just working on the scale, and the dimensional requirements for height, roof type, and so on, you know, I think that certainly fits maybe more of the small-town character that we've discussed over the last few months. But the density here could be a bit high. And then, so going back to this, but I think when we're getting under 12, that's starting to get into a, you know, a scale that might fit in certain areas. So, the next is 433 Adams. This is in Grand Haven, seven units attached, side-by-side. This is right at 12 units per acre. And so, two stories, I don't believe they have a half-story on top at all. And so two stories, I, you know, I don't believe they have a half-story on top at all. And uh, I think thi- this, I think the one thing about this building is because you have seven in a row, i- it gets to be bulky and the scale might be out of- out of place at that point. So, but if you look at just two units or three, you know, anywhere from two to four, you know, maybe this is something that- that fits. But it's the, once, when you have, you know, my opinion, once you get over five uh, attached townhouses, you're getting to be, you know, a bit more of a, you know, denser, you know, urban area uh, than- than maybe what we're considering. Um, now this is interesting, we're getting toward the end here. Uh, this is, uh, I was trying to find a kind of an infill duplex. This is on Sheldon in Grand Haven. And mentioned before, uh, it's just two, two, one building, two units, but it's, it calculated out, uh, it would be 11.11 units per acre. And- and this is, it looks like a house. I mean, it- it is a duplex side-by-side. It- it, anyway, it- it fits right in a single-family residential neighborhood. If you- if you go on Street View or you drive by, I think most of the houses along in this area are- are single-family detached, so. And I- I don't think this necessarily sticks out. I mean, uh, the- the- the scale is- is a, you know, the scale of a single-family house. Uh, then lastly, I was actually surprised how this one was one of our, yeah, it was actually our lowest. Sorry, wrong way. It's in Spring Lake. And it's actually just the right side. I couldn't, it, when I selected it, it selects the- the parcels on the west side of that driveway as well. But just the east side is 1.24 acres. And there are, now this is single-family detached, uh, but we're looking at a- a higher density. Uh, so the- the lot, uh, lot square footage per unit would be uh, 4,900 square feet per unit. Um, that's about 8.9 units per acre. And- and so as you're aware, in RG2, in RG3, uh, our- our minimum lot size is- is 7,000. So if, another option is- is we adjust certain areas, um, possibly to be, to have smaller lot sizes. And again, this, um, you know, that- that, that certainly has a visual impact to it, in my opinion. And it looks denser than- than the lowest on our list, uh, but that's somewhat part of the design as well. But this is actually 8.9 units per acre. And the- the lot square footage is- is, you know, just right around 5,000 compared to what we have at- at 7,000 in uh, two of our zoning districts. So that, um, before we get into the- the second half of the presentation, my- my thought is that, first off, I- I think there's a good comment before about- about considering some of the- the attached housing, some of those scenarios, maybe the um, medium level densities for our- our commercial districts where we had thought that multifamily and attached housing could be appropriate. Maybe it is on- on the- the north side of our downtown area where we have that transitional residential area that's currently actually commercial zoned. So I- I think we could look at tho- those, some of those sub-area blocks that we discussed over the last months and- and see how some of these arrangements can plug in there. And then, what I- what I would do, when I- when I list out all these bullet points, um, you know, this- this is kind of gives you the- the recipe for- for zoning. Uh, we- we have lot size, we have a square footage per unit. We, uh, on all of these, you'll see, as you have a, uh, some time to review the- the slides. We have the- the width of the unit, uh, the uh, the average width um, per lot. Then I've- I've plugged in the- the setbacks as well, uh, for- for all of these uh, case studies as well. So, um, we kind of, we have somewhat of a recipe to- to, you know, plug these types of housing arrangements in certain districts uh, based on um, what we have here. So, um, before we move on, a- any, so yeah, this is kind of an update of my thinking and my study of- of, um, you know, looking at other case studies, looking at other examples and seeing what may- may fit in certain blocks in- in Ferrisburg. So a- any uh, gut reaction comments before you have a chance to really dig into the pages that I sent you?
No, I- I'll just say, first, I- I think this is really, really great seeing these and how you've uh, put the numbers with the images. I think when we talk about uh, allowing denser housing, uh, you know, people might say, you're gonna take the charm away from Ferrisburg. I know- I know we really want to find a Ferrisburg solution. And so seeing, seeing how attractive and charming uh, some of these uh, solutions can be, it really helps us have a comfort factor. But I know we didn't have a lot of time to review this before tonight's presentation. Any other comments, missionaries?
So the- the second half of this presentation, um, so this is pretty interesting. Uh, this exercise, uh, one of our actions was to uh, consider the reduction of lot sizes and width in residential districts a- as well a- as setbacks to- to match the existing context. So, uh, as you know, with zoning, uh, really kind of two strategies. Uh, one strategy could be to- to reimagine an area, so, or- or to require that anything in the future i- is different than what is there now. So let's just say that we have an area that the average lot size is 5,000 square feet and- and the city just doesn't like that. And- and you want new develop, any new platted or- or divided land to be larger lots. You- you could say the minimum lot area then is 7,000 or 10,000. So, and what you find in a lot of communities is that you have minimum lot sizes and minimum widths of lots and setbacks that um, are- are, don't really match the existing built environment. So a lot of times, there- there, lot- lots in the zoning ordinance for a district are- are a lot larger than- than what you actually have on the ground. So then, you know, that results in a lot of non-conforming lots. And- and then when you apply setbacks, the setbacks are assuming the lots are gonna be compliant, larger. And then, so when you have a non-conforming lot, you- you, it's difficult to apply that- that setback. And then, that's when, you know, cases go to the zoning board. Um, now, as you know, the- the overlay district, you know, the inland uh, Lake Over- uh, Lake District uh, does have some provisions. So if you are a certain percentage, you have substandard width or size, there's a provision that- that your setbacks uh, can be adjusted accordingly. So I think that- that's actually a good solution. And I think the city went through that exercise uh, before my time, but uh, I think that- that was, this was identified as an issue that, you know, we have a, it's all RG1, but none of these lots comply. They are, they're all way substandard in terms of width and size, so we need a solution. So this is almost a similar conversation to- to- to the, to the problem that- that Ferrisburg um, addressed several years ago. Craig, you know, was that maybe 20 years ago, the- the overlay district or? Fifty, okay. Yeah, maybe, like, I- I started at 13, it was before, maybe it was, maybe the 2010-ish? Okay. Blends in after a while. But uh, so the inland overlay was actually, uh, the inland overlay um, is actually a good example and probably went through a similar exercise, so. So what this does is, if we're also adjusting lot sizes down, so it kind of goes back to the point of, of, you know, what drives up cost? A lot of times, it's lot size and the size of the house. And so i- if there- if there are certain areas that, you know, that all the existing lots are 5,000 square feet and we're requiring 10,000, um, you know, for redeveloping or- or making different arrangements, you have to have a much larger lot, it's more expensive. And- and it might not fit the character of that area too, because um, everything else is 5,000 square feet, but we're requiring 10,000 for new lots. So, uh, that, so that's why it's important to- to look at all of your, you know, neighborhoods to see if- if our zoning i- is appropriate for what's there. So I, this is, these will be hard to read, but I'll prob- I'll just call out some of the information. Um, you'll be able to see it a little bit better in your- in your packet or- or the document I sent. So I- I'm starting wi- with our, with RD, then going to, um, well, we- we start with RD first and I think we go to RG1, then RG2, uh, just a couple of examples. So this is a Piney Point, uh, 17 parcels. And uh, this is a RD low-density Dune Residential. And uh, this is very difficult to read, but- but I'll- I'll- I'll explain this. These, I have these tables for all 10 or so of these case studies. So we have the address, we have the acreage, the square footage, lot depth, lot width, set, front setback, side setback, a rear, rear setback and side setbacks. So every time you see something highlighted in yellow, it means it's non-conforming. So i- in this, this is actually not, not terribly non-conforming. In the secondary table, you'll see, when you, when you can read a little bit better uh, on your, on your own document, I- I- I pulled out some of the outliers, so some of the- the lots that were very large and very wide, I did pull some of those out just to see how the averages uh, would- would, would play out. So, uh, you know, I'll just summarize this. So RD has a, the lot, minimum lot size is 12,000. This neighborhood, this is actually pretty good, all the lots average at 18,000. If you pull out some of the larger one, I- I removed the top seven largest because they're kind of way larger than the others. Uh, the average was still 14,000. So the, in terms of the, you know, there's only two lots that are- are non-conforming to so- to lot size. Now, lot width, there are- are five lots that are less than the lot width of 100. So you, uh, and that's, and the overall average is 117, and then you take out the outlier, the large ones, it's 104. So, you know, I- I would make no adjustments here because, you know, it's pretty close to what you have. A lot of them are- are- are good to go. Then we move to front setback, you have a couple, you know, three that don't conform to front setback, rear setback two, side setback just, you know, four or so. So again, this is a case where I probably wouldn't make any adjustments to RD. And I think uh, you have a lot of lots that- that makes sense, you know, for- for this particular area. Um, on North Shore, same zoning district. Uh, this case study is 29 parcels. Uh, now this one, I- I, so this is the other side of- of the road. Uh, this one, you see a lot different. So we, same zoning district, same requirements, 12,000 square feet. And you have a lot of non-conforming lots in terms of the size. So that- that's this first row, a lot of them are on, you know, I know you can't read that, but that's, there's 6,000, 6,000, 7,000s, 8,000s, 9,000s. Uh, the average is 9,900. As- as compared to the lot sizes, requirement is 12,000. Uh, then you take out the top five, it's 8,500. Uh, for lot width, you have a, most of them are non-conforming. You have a, an average of 66 feet wide. And if you take out the outliers, it's 60. So again, I- I, we, North Shore, I don't think is a- a place where we're going to make any changes. I think just, it's, it, in some cases, you zone toward, you know, to what the existing context is. I think this is, might be the exception. And- and tell me if I'm wrong, but um, I think when you have like a lake shore type of environment like this, you're probably not trying to- to increase densities in this location, uh, maybe the, some of the other target locations. But still, i- it's just interesting to see how- how far off the houses on the west side of the road are than- than what the zoning district requires. You know, a lot of setback, a lot of side setback issues. So you have a minimum side setback of 10, you have a lot that are- are very small. Um, okay, then I- I, I think you'll probably get the point on a lot of these, so I'm not gonna um, go too deep on- on all the case studies. You- you'll have a chance to read them, obviously. Uh, but this is Harbor Point. Uh, now we move to RG1 zoning district. In this case, uh, you see a lot of lot width issues. So the lot width in RG1 is 100 feet minimum. You have probably more than half that are- that are less than 100 feet. Um, the average is 112 for all of them, but then if you take out the top six, you get to about 97. So I mean, there- there are a lot of non-conforming lot widths, but they're not that far off. And in this case, you have a- a few side setbacks that are- that are just under. Uh, Jordan Lane RG1, so same- same zoning requirements. This one, uh, pretty good. Only one, a one lot here is less than 10,000 square feet. Only one lot, same one, is less than 100 feet wide. And then you just have a handful that are- are non-conforming with setbacks, but they're not that far off. Uh, Mohawk RG1. Uh, so this one's interesting, there's, there- there were about half of them were- were non-conforming, this is lot width. Uh, but actually, they're not that far off. They're- they're 95, they're 85, 95, 98, 99. So they're not that far off from that 100 requirement here. And- and there's a few non-conforming side setbacks. This is the Spar Street. Now this one's just strange because you can see there's a lot of these very narrow lots. So I- I didn't even calculate the- the lot width. I didn't even do the non-conforming analysis here just because it's- it's way off, just based on the, you know, the lots on- on the curves. Uh, but here, um, you have a number of side setbacks that are, they're non-conforming. Uh, Thorn Apple RG1, a lot width. Again, they look, it looks bad because there's a lot of non-conforming lot width, but it's that bottom number, the average is 95. That's not far off from 100, uh, the 100-foot minimum. So this is actually, looks pretty good in the average, but just several lots are just under that. Uh, RG1 Valley City in Doric. So this one, so this is, this is um, also in the inland lakefront overlay district. So this is where we get to, this is one of the reasons why there's an overlay district. If you see how many of these lots are non-conforming. So you see, m- most of them here, there's 16. 14 of them don't comply with the 10,000 square foot minimum. 14 don't comply with the 100-foot lot width. All the front setbacks, aside from two of them, are- are non-conforming. And then you have a number of other non-conforming setbacks. So, so this is a case where- where we maybe wanna look at that overlay a bit. Make some adjustments possibly. So this- this is a, this is one that, that, you know, would be a little bit concerning, just the amount of- of non-conformities here. But again, it is in the overlay. Beach Street and Maple. Uh, so this is a, another one where the most of these lots are, so this is where we get into RG2. So RG2 district. The lot, minimum lot size is 7,000, so most of these actually comply. But you have, a lot of these are narrower than- than 70, but- but not that far off. They're, the average is 72, you throw out the outliers, it's 64. This is a case where I might wanna, you know, consider you doing the lot width at 66. So a lot of historic platted areas are 66 feet, maybe that would be something to consider here. Setbacks, a lot of non-conforming front setbacks, front setbacks. Now, when- when we do, another solution that was in the zoning ordinance, um, that was added years ago was- was the, the front yard averaging, so that- that's another, um, that kind of also addresses some of this to, so that if you're, let's just say you- you are building a new house, you're gonna take the average front setback of- of the houses within 200 feet. And- and that allows you to have a reduced front setback. So, you know, that- that's another solution that, you know, works in some cases as well. Maple Street. Only one, non-conforming to lot size. You have a, here, similar to the other one, a lot of that are under the lot width. And- and the average, after you throw out the top three, is 59 feet, whereas your requirement is 70. And so that is it. So, um, this exercise for me, it was two things. One was- was to just understand the- the current zoning and- and how far off we are from existing conditions. And I think, you know, as we begin to uh, have, you know, include recommendations for single-family, two-family and townhouses, we want to understand uh, these types of blocks just to see, you know, what are- what are the existing lot widths, what are the depths, what are the average setbacks? So that we can code appropriately for- for- for new housing types. Or we may adjust some- Or we may adjust some of these zoning districts to be a little bit closer to what's already there. In certain cases, you can always look at reducing it lot size or lot width just for, to increase density or to, you have more affordable, smaller houses on smaller lots. So that's another use for this information. So this is really just more of a block by block analysis. I don't really have recommendations necessarily from these yet, but this is just, it's important for us to understand these lots and blocks as we propose changes to these zoning districts.
Thank you, David. It's a lot to take in, but I think we are starting to see how these pieces fit together, the lot size, the setbacks, and the degree to which many neighborhoods have considerable amounts of non-conforming housing already. So where would we, you asked earlier for some direction from us about, are we at that point now?
Yes, I think so. So next steps, I can certainly start on the draft zoning language for the previous presentations. So that would be our general commercial, core commercial service zoning districts where we talked about attached housing, mixed use and multifamily. I think those, I think that's a bit, that's a little bit more straightforward than the residential districts. And I think we could, we could probably at least get that in front of you with the first drafts fairly soon. And then at the same time though, on the background, I want to continue on some of this analysis on the residential side and then be, you're beginning to make, you know, begin to make recommendations on where we might allow for some duplexes or triplexes or short rows of townhouses in certain areas. So I think what I would, the first question is, should we focus on those previous presentations and then bring something back to your next regular meeting? Or continue on, there's one or two final recommendations regarding the processes, you know, streamlining review processes as well as the size of dwellings. And we had talked about the garage requirements and a few other things. So there's a few recommendations left, but they're certainly not as intense as this one. They're a little bit more straightforward. So would you like me to prioritize on the downtown and commercial districts, at least to get you draft language before I get draft language for residential districts? And then, so do you do any purpose on the strategy on what you see next?
Do we, does everybody understand the question? So one way to frame it is let's continue to discuss all 10 of our action items and then start preparing draft language to address those 10. Or if you can do this, and it sounds like you're suggesting this as an alternative, is while we are still moving forward on the remaining action items, we would ask you to start preparing draft languages on the first areas that we've discussed, the downtown and core commercial.
That's correct. For instance, I could come back with recommended language on our initial conversations. Maybe the next meeting, we talk about that first and then I present maybe more information on residential districts as well as the remaining action items. But we could, we can make an effort really to get something in front of you on the things that we've already discussed and that we already had consensus on for the most part.
Some low hanging fruit as well as some long-term stuff. Long-term planning.
I see a lot of nodding heads. So David, if you can do that, I think there's, it's advantageous, while it's still somewhat fresh in our minds, the discussions we've had on downtown and core commercial to continue to proceed, to get something in front of us on that while we continue to work through the remaining items.
Mr. Chair. David, are you thinking that we're gonna, we want to look through these materials that you sent us today, right? And some of them are all reasonably close, so we can go and look at them. You want us to do our homework on this, correct, for the next meeting? We're going to continue residential next meeting?
Yeah, correct. And I think, as you were able to absorb these 50 or so slides and the information there, I think next meeting, I would also just like to follow up on some examples on how, you know, we, well, how, examples about how we might be able to incorporate some of the attached housing into these existing blocks. And, you know, as we do this, we'll start from, we'll start big with the intent that we can narrow down. Like, we'll say, okay, we'll say RG2, we're going to allow for townhouses, like just hypothetically. You know, we're comfortable with four-unit townhouses. And I'll write the framework so that it just allows it everywhere. And then once you have a chance to look at that and say, okay, maybe we don't like it here, or maybe here it's only duplexes. And then we can start to narrow it down from there. So just knowing that, like, I'm going to always start from the wider side of things with the intent that we narrow down to your comfort level.
Makes sense.
Yes, it sounds good. Are we closing on housing? All right. Thank you, David. Thank you, everyone. So the next action item is, Craig has pointed out that our next meeting, or excuse me, our January 1st meeting falls on a holiday. And I think the consensus was that Craig should just show up anyhow.
We can do that.
So we don't know how much business we'll have before us on that date. And you've said that the following Thursday, there is another board meeting scheduled that night.
Zoning, yes. I'm not sure if we're going to have any applications or not.
So it sounds like potentially we will be canceling our January 1st meeting. And so that might, might mean we would try to get as much done as we can in November and December. I don't know if we would be trying to squeeze in any extra meetings this year. Where are we on the, do we have a solid deadline where we have to finish the housing recommendations based on the grant, David, Craig?
Yeah, it's due in April, so we got to finish this up in March.
Okay. I think the intent would be just to at least get all the invoices in, the bulk of the project. And that still may be, like, if you're, if you still need consideration after a public hearing or minor tweaks, if things are just continuing to be discussed, I think that's fine to go beyond. But as long as we got the bulk of the project billed by that deadline, I think that would make, Craig, you think that would be the priority at least just to?
I agree, but November's going to be a busy meeting too, with the cell tower, public hearing, and the sign, another discussion on housing.
I had mentioned at the last meeting, trying to finish this this year, but you know, it's better to do the job right than rush it. So I think we all still have a deadline of getting it wrapped, wrapping it up by March.
Should Craig and I look at some potential special meeting dates just as we figure out our game plan over the next five months? Should we think about an extra date later this month or November or December?
Yeah, and circulate them to the commissioners.
And what if we just reschedule the different date in January and then we would have more time in between?
Yes.
I support that. That's what I was saying.
December gets really busy.
And I'll just say, I was, I was planning to have a life in January and. I think even Roger Jonas went away in January, so.
We'll still have six of us. We'll have six of us still.
All right, so we'll, so you want to schedule a different, reschedule the January 1st meeting until like January 7th, Wednesday or?
I don't, maybe we could, if you could share with the commission possible dates that might work and we can discuss whether we want to pursue one of those.
And I guess my question is, do we have to decide right now? Do we want to see where we get in November and where we get in December and then decide if we want to have a special meeting in a different time in January?
Yeah, I think it's good to plan, but I don't think we have to decide. It's, it's just kind of, we may be canceling, we may not be holding the meeting on January 1st.
How far in advance do we have to know that?
So we've got to, I just want to know if we're going to cancel January 1st, I guess as we are. So when we start putting, developers come in or someone with an application, we can tell them for sure it's not going to be January 1st, it's going to be February.
Yes.
So then any business that we did want to do regarding this in January would pretty much be for wrapping up some things with this.
Well, I think we are, at the moment, looking at, we're not meeting on January 1st and unless we schedule additional meetings, we'll be meeting on the first Thursday in February.
We can schedule a special meeting in January, but we should just cancel a regular meeting in January 1st.
Let's do that.
Okay.
So I would need a motion, please.
I'll move to cancel the January 1 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, okay, there's your direction.
Who opposed? You opposed?
Oh, no, he was at all.
I asked, I asked if anyone was opposed.
Okay.
We're at a second offering for public comments. Would anyone in the audience care to make public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to zoning administrator's report, no report, chairman's report. As I mentioned during the course on the housing meeting, Craig was part of a panel with the Tri-City Chamber of Commerce and Regina and I and also former mayor Hop was attended. So it was very informative and it really showed how our discussion on housing is part of a larger concern in the area that people have to work and people have to have jobs and employers need housing. And the chamber is continuing to address future town halls on other issues like childcare, I think, and.
Education and transportation.
Yes, yes. So, and I just wanted to make a brief plug that every year there is a Tri-Cities Crop Hunger Walk to raise money for people who are short of food around the world and also in our community. And this year it is based in Ferriesburg and it will be, we'll be meeting at the Ferriesburg Community Church on Sunday, October 5th at 1:00. And if you're not familiar with this, this is a great way to get involved. And there are a number of really good charities in the area that help people in the Tri-Cities with clothing and food needs.
No report.
No report.
Thank you, David, for your report. And I will not be here next month. I'm going to be in New Orleans, so, excuse me, please.
No report.
No report.
No report.
Craig, our next meeting?
November 6.
November 6. One member. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Ooh.
Yes.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]